So we tried and we tried and nothing. All of a sudden I have to get off the phone.
No.
I went, I hit Judy.
So she was declared?
To make the print smaller and then all of a sudden the whole page. But the, the print is so tiny, but then when I click on the bill list, that went to regular size. So I called Judy back real quick. I said, Judy, I got it! But between the two of us.
There you go, Fal. I see you.
But, uh...
Here is Fal. Fal?
Thank you.
Mrs. Patel?
Oh, thanks, man.
Mrs. Patel, do you hear us? Mrs. Patel? Fal?
She probably can't hear you.
Fal, Fal, they're calling you, Fal.
Ralphard.
There you go. There we go. You hear me now? Okay. I hear you.
Fal, your, your, your mic is very low.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better.
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 That's better. All right, we have enough to start. Yep. Unna's coming, Terry?
I think so.
Okay. All right, we'll start. We'll just tell her to go right into closed session if you can. There we go. I'd like to call the meeting order and have our flags salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every vote of the governor, chief, and justice.
If we could please remain standing for a moment of silence. Over this weekend, we lost one of our students from Edison High School in a sudden death. So we want to have a moment of silence for that young man. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Mashak.
Mr. Derico?
Here. Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Here.
Mrs. Matiker?
Here.
Old President, Mrs. Chan, Dr. Chen. Thank you. Opening statement, the New Jersey Public, Open Public Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend to meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has cause notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the home News Tribune and Star Ledger on August 25th, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Okay, as we said, we're going to go right into privileged session. So we need a reading, right? Yes. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter 231, public laws of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Township Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion or of an action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney, client privilege, privileged discussion regarding student matters, bus contracts, litigation brought up by former employees and students, ETA grievances, perking unfair labor practices, personnel matters. Under personnel, we'll be discussing resignations, interminations, retirements, appointments, leave of absences, changes of status, lunch aids, longevity, 2021 family night, Title One funded, 2021 split funded personnel, stipend for paraprofessionals and MD, LD and autistic programs, salary adjustments for certified staff, salary adjustments for non-certified staff, team leaders, substitutes, coaching appointments, co-curricular appointments, job description and authorization to approve requests for extended health benefits. Three, is anticipated this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Thank you, Dan. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mr. Shi, Mrs. Conway? Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Miss Derico? Yes, and Dr. Chen is here. Oh, she is? Yes. Okay. Welcome. Dr. Chen, yes?
Yes.
All right. All favor. All right. We all hope to be back between seven and 7:30. Hopefully by seven, but, you know, we will keep you posted. We'll have someone come outside if we think we're going to go longer than 7:15 or so. Thank you. All right. Now we need to log into Carolyn Fal into the closed session meeting.
Going to the library, right?
It's not the library, it's on 136.
Oh, 136.
We'll go right out of the hallway here, right after you're here. I'm sorry about that.
Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes.
Thank you.
Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes. Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes. Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes. Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes. Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes. Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes. Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes. Just an update for those here in the audience and at home, the board should be back in about 20 minutes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Foul, turn up your mic a little bit. All right, I need a motion to reconvene. Mrs. Conway and Mrs. Pang. Roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Maroney?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in open session. Okay, now we're gonna go resolutions and reports. Dr. Regan, start with personnel.
Thank you, Board President. Erica, as you can see in the agenda, the personnel reports that we just reviewed in closed session have been released, both electronically and in the public. From the administration, we have a few items to review. The approval, you'll find the resolutions for approval of the PSAT testing date, which is going to be October 17th. The date where it was normally scheduled to be was October 14th, but we're still gonna be remote at that time, so that is a Saturday. It's a little bit different. Kudos to the secondary administrative team for pulling that off and putting that together. You'll also find approval for the administration of the PSAT eighth and ninth graders later on in the year, hopefully when we're back in session in the classrooms on a regular basis. That'll be at the start of the new year. We don't have that date scheduled yet. You'll also find a ratification of the ETA, ETTA agreement for our transportation workers. It's a four-year agreement, and I know the board committee worked hard on getting that together, as well as the negotiations team for the Transportation Association. So, we're proud to have that on the agenda for approval. You'll find a memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement. That's an annual agreement that we do. I must say that we work really well with the police in Edison Township, and we have a great working relationship. Through this pandemic, we work closely with the Office of Emergency Management, the mayor's office, and a lot of the police representatives there, including Chief Tommy Bryan as well. There's also a memorandum of agreement with Middlesex County College, so that our students can take college-level courses from Middlesex College, which they're now changing to be Middlesex College, instead of where I graduated from, Middlesex County College. We wanna expand that program, too. We've talked about it with our administrative team, and, you know, our end goal is to afford our students the opportunity to graduate from our high schools with an associate's degree as well. And this is just one more step moving towards that. The meeting dates have been revised. The Board of Education has taken feedback from the community, so that the caucus dates will now be on Thursdays, and the meeting dates will be on Tuesdays, to afford our township and residents the opportunity to attend the town council meetings. There won't be a conflict on those, moving forward. Thank you.
Dr. Regan, can you get a little bit closer to some echo?
For me, there's echo? I'm sorry.
Too close, I think.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
I guess so. There's an amendment to the onsite clinical services agreement. That's something where we have supports in place for our employees that are going through difficult times, so we wanted to make sure we got that on the agenda as well. Our school calendar has been revised. No dates have been changed, except for the dates for the parent-teacher conferences, which were not listed correctly on the calendar and are now in accordance with our new collective bargaining agreement. and are now in accordance with our new collective bargaining agreement with the Edison Teachers Association. Curriculum and instruction, you'll find there are a few revisions, curriculum guides, as well as a textbook approval. For our pupil services, special services, our added district placements, as you know, that's normally fluid. There's some pluses and minuses there for students who exit into programs and exited out. And you'll find our nursing services plan, as well as our professional services for the school year. Those are services primarily for students that have special needs. It doesn't mean that we're gonna use all those services, but those are the providers that we approve and are eligible to use, should the need present itself. And that's all I have at this point, I will pass it over to Mr. Michelle for our finance resolution.
Before we get into those, let's take board member comments on anything.
I'm sorry.
So I'm gonna start to my left, Mrs. Peng, or Dr. Chen, I'm sorry, Dr. Chen. Any questions on?
No.
No, okay, Mrs. Conway?
No, my only question was on the professional services, I just wanna confirm that the two services where their home office is in Chicago and Massachusetts actually has a local office that we deal with?
That is confirmed.
Thank you.
Mr. Shi?
Yes, so, questioning about these professional services, I see that we have a long list of them. For some other vendors, like Jumpstart and those for our special needs students, I thought we approved all their appointment in, was it June, July before, and now they're showing up again. What is the reason for that? And the other thing is, all these services, I know they have been the, they've been in the district for a quite long time. Have we rebid it on this, or are we going to, looking for a rebid down the road?
The ones that were approved, I believe it was in June, these are additions too, if there are some that were on there, we updated the list to include everyone, so we have the availability to use those services if we need. As you know, professional services don't necessarily require it to be bidded, but it is things we can look at to make sure we get the best deal and the best services for our money, and we're, we will continue to do that.
Okay. So we can, we can get requests for proposals, it doesn't have to be bid, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, so, can we start looking into it down the road? I guess we already, the school had already started, so it might be a little late to ask this, but next year, can we look into getting some proposals? These guys have been here for a long, long time.
As time goes on, Mr. Shi, I've been here a long time too, but that doesn't mean it's bad, does it?
Well, yes, we wanna see if they can, you know, we can have other vendors who can provide similar or better service at a better rate.
Chop, chop in a pencil.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Shi?
That's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Peng, you're welcome. Nothing? Mrs. Maroney?
Yeah, I just wanna say how thrilled I am that we're expanding the Middlesex College program with the students, it's a promise that Dr. Bregan made to us when he was interviewed, and so, there it is delivered, so thanks, Dr. Bregan.
Thank you.
So, so I will also echo the same thing, it's a terrific effort, and it'll be great to see our high school students graduate with an associate's degree. I just had two things to add, I'm, it's not gonna deflect on their GPA, right, it's just something that's gonna show on their transcript.
The logistics of that, I'd have to check out with the secondary personnel.
Okay.
And what that exactly administrates, how we have that set up.
Okay, and the second thing, you know, I would hope that enough information would go out to students to know exactly how to enroll and what to do, and just the basic things, so that they know what they're supposed to do, and the second thing, I just actually noticed on the calendar, which I had not noticed earlier, and I know that we approved this calendar on August twenty-fourth. I see a lot of single-session days, and what would that mean, given that once we go into hybrid, we'll all already be kind of on, working on a shortened schedule?
You ask really tough questions, Mrs. Matiker. The single-session days were planned to spread out the professional development over the course of the school year, so it would be a single session for students, and the second half of the day would be for professional development for the staff. In the hybrid model, we have to define what exactly that'll look like, and we're still working on that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bregan.
Thank you. Mrs. Bedoski, anything?
No, just what Mrs. Matiker said about the Middlesex County College courses, because I was luckily enough to see a family member recently graduate from another county, another college, and got a two-year degree, and we didn't really expect her to be able to do that, and you know what? She went on and got a four-year degree by now, so it really is a good jumpstart for the kids.
Good. Mrs. Patel?
Yeah, I just also wanted to thank Dr. Bregan and Gail Polakowski for putting this memorandum of agreement together, I think it's fantastic for our school district, and it kinda highlights my entire time on this board right now, so I'm very excited.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one comment, I'd like to thank all the board members, and Dr. Bregan, and Mr. Mashad for working out the new dates. It's something that I brought up a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago. Information from the public saying that we are being conflicted, and I guess the count, we moved one, the council didn't move any, so we kinda decided as a board that we would move both of our meetings, it's a little tougher for the administration to get everything together, but Dan and Dr. Bregan assured me that we would be able to get that information on a timely basis. I know Mrs. Conway, one of her concerns was, you know, in the single-session meetings, we get the agenda on Friday. We would like to enjoy our weekends, even though most of us get phone calls and emails all weekend, but, you know, by the time we look at it Monday, you know, we don't have a chance to call Dan or Dr. Bregan. Now, we will get the information on a Monday, we'll have a work session on a Thursday, so we'll have three, three and a half days to review it during the week, and I think the meetings will work out better, and hopefully we get more participation and feedback from the public. So I'd like to thank all the board members for agreeing with this, and we'll see what happens next year, you know, if we, we stick with it or not. Thank you. Okay, now, finance.
Can I have one clear question, thing?
I'm sorry.
This is about MCC program?
Go ahead.
So, this is not a degree program, this is, we're taking their courses, right, just like what we had, it's the same thing that we've been doing, and we have not got to the point that if they take certain courses, they will get that degree yet, right?
We're not there yet. The, the goal is to work, we've been working with the president of Middlesex College to have that up and running by September of next year.
Next year.
So that would require, as Mrs. Matiker said, make sure we get that information out and have all that, right now, we're doing the course walk, the curriculum walk, to make sure which courses we have that would correspond to their associates, and then which ones would we have to take. We're in the process of doing that now, this is just one more step towards that, Mr. Shi, but you're right, that's not this program here, that will have a big, bigger rollout when we do that.
So we have, we added more courses on this?
I believe so.
Okay, that's cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, finance, please.
Okay.
Just one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the courses, are those new courses listed on the website already, or can the?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
The courses for the, to take MCC, are those listed on the website anywhere? I know there used to be one that listed on the website.
On the website, it's for us, for students enrolling, is that what you asked, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
The list of the courses.
I'll double-check to make sure if they're not.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Finance, Dan.
Okay, thank you. All right, first item on the finance is approval of the minutes from the August twenty-fourth meeting. Second item is the board secretary's report for July, and you're gonna notice the format is somewhat different than what we're used to, because now we have the genesis system for our finances starting July first, so the format is, is, looks a little different than we're used to, but the information is basically the same. After that, we have the investment report. The interest we received for the month of August was fifty-six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, bringing our total for the year up to twelve thousand fifty-three dollars. Then we have the resolutions that we're looking for board approval for tonight. First one is for appropriation of our homeless children's funds. You can see that the three of the four transfers are for professional services from, from our IT department. What our plan, plan is, is to try to get some of this money back from the FEMA grant that we applied for, but until we get approval for do that, I need to cover it with some kind of funding. And the other one is the security supplies, which happens to be our radio system, we upgraded the whole radio system district-wide, so we need to appropriate enough to cover that for the time being. Item number two is the digital divide grant, that is money that we received from the federal government, specifically for one-on-one instruments for the students. So we want, we need the board to accept that five, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, and we did actually purchase all the units for the students out of that money, so it's not costing the district anything, it's coming from the federal money. Item number three is the CARES grant, that's also federal money we received, if you remember last month. The non-public schools wanted to change their allocation from supplies to purchase services, because we're probably in the same boat we are, we'd have to provide services to, for remote learning. So, in order to do that, we need the board to approve an amendment to that grant. Item number four is the one ninety-two, one ninety-three special education funding we received from the state. This goes to our nineteen schools, there's nineteen non-public schools in Edison, they're entitled to funding similar to what the public schools are. It goes through us, we're the conduit between the state and the non-public schools, so we, we're gonna get a total of four hundred and four thousand seven seventy-one for those, for those services. Item number five is the non-public nursing aid, they're also entitled to the same kind of aid we get for our nursing. So it's a total of one hundred ninety-five thousand for the nineteen schools. And then, number six is for the non-public nursing to be handled by the Ed Services Commission, and you see what the nineteen, the nineteen schools are listed in that resolution that we have to handle. They're all entitled to an allocation, the actual allocation by, is ninety-seven dollars per student, and it's all based on the number of enrollment students they have that they reported to the state. Item number seven, if you remember last month, we had a very generous donation from the PTO, which James, John Adams Middle School for a sign, an exterior sign. We have the same thing this month from James Monroe, James Madison Intermediate School. They're offering also ten thousand dollars for their sign in front of their school, so we're, we're very happy to accept that, we appreciate the generosity. Item number eight is the non-public monies for Wardlow Archorage for security. This is a purchase order that has to go through us and be approved by us before we can actually have them authorize the, the purchase, but it's, funding comes from the state, not from the local taxpayers. Item number nine is the same thing, except for the technology grant, it's for P S A C Raymond Yeshiva for the sixty-one hundred dollars. Same thing, we need to approve the purchase order before we actually purchase the materials. Item number ten is a list of obsolete items that we have listed from the schools that we'd like to declare obsolete. Then number eleven is a copy of the bill list, and that also is in a little different format than we were used to. I already had a few board members give me a call about a couple of things on there, so if anybody has any questions, just please give me a call. And the last item is the transportation report for September. These are either vocational ed or special education routes that we're approving for the 2021 school year. That concludes my report, Mr. Eriko.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna start with questions from Mrs. Patel this time. Nothing, Mrs. Patel?
Oh.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Bedoski?
I'm good.
Okay. Mrs. Matiker?
I had a question, but then Dan already answered in his presentation. It was about the homelessness grant and how that would be adjusted.
Mrs. Maroney?
I'm good.
Good. Mrs. Peng?
Uh, yeah, no.
Any questions? No, okay, Mr. Shi?
Yes, our number two, item number two, this nine hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, that is the one we already, that's the one we already spent, because we asked them for the
Breakdown.
Thing, breakdown, that's already in.
We all got it, yes.
Okay, so you mentioned about, we're gonna apply for FEMA money?
Yes.
For the MacBooks that we bought for the teachers, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, every, everything else that was related to COVID-19, we are gonna apply for FEMA monies.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and also that, the, the bigger thermal camera?
Yes.
That's four hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's also part of the FEMA, right?
That's correct.
How comfortable are we that, that, you know, we're gonna get the money, hope, hope we're gonna get?
We had a conference call with them a couple, last week, I think it was Thursday, Maria Lopez, our grants writer, myself, and three people from FEMA, and they told us exactly what we needed to do, and they told us, they said, actually said, everything had to be purchased by the fifteenth of September, however, things changed after the fifteenth, and they said, if you submit it, you may still get it. So I told Maria, we're sending everything, and let them tell us what we're not gonna get, I'd rather put it in here or not get it, they not put it in, and we could've gotten it.
Yeah.
So we're gonna put in for everything, and we are putting down, and we're going for over a million dollars.
Yes, those, those two items added together, it's one point one five million dollars.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so I just have a question for attorney, so, right now, those money are paid from our own budget, right? So for some big purchase like this, I know this is coming from the FEMA, do we need the board to approve these kind of purchase?
Purchase for, for what?
For like, yeah, the, the MacBook.
What, the thermometers?
Six hundred, six hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Well, it'll, the board approves any, and you did actually approve the thermometers.
Yes.
Thermometer, yes, but not the MacBook.
The board should approve everything that's over the bid threshold.
Which is?
Forty-four thousand. Forty-four. But we, those are on state contract?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what you did, oh, those are under state contract, so then the board does the approval?
Yeah, those are from Apple, so Apple's has a state contract.
So you did the, you did the approval?
Yep.
The prior approval for that one.
But I don't think, I don't recall we approved the six hundred ninety thousand dollar MacBook.
We approved the, using, using the state contract vendors, and we did talk about the fact we wanted to purchase that for the staff.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, we didn't come up with a number, because we didn't know what the number was at that time.
Okay.
But we did go ahead and purchase, I remember you are gonna apply.
Last meeting, we had a number, six hundred ninety, right?
Say it again?
Last meeting, we had a number, six hundred ninety, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but we did not come to the board for approval, I just wanted to see procedurally, I know, you know, we don't have to, because this is federal money, if we can get it, that's fantastic. The problem is, what if we don't, right? So, procedurally, for, for, for the attorney, you know, just to see, do we, do we need to approve this? Although these are, you know, federal funded or state funded and stuff, things like this.
State bid, right.
Yeah, do we need, do, doesn't the board need to approve?
Once we get approval from FEMA for reimbursement, the board will have to approve all of this, everything that we apply for, for FEMA, for the amount of money we're getting.
Yeah, but we already spend the money.
Right, correct.
We spend the money out of our own budget.
We have to.
Right.
Yeah, I understand, but does the board need to approve it?
And I need to look at the resolutions to see what was done?
Okay.
So that I can, I can, I can give it a more appropriate response?
Okay.
So that I can figure, find out what was done.
It is great that we can get the funding, you know, the thing that, what if we don't, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna eat it. And, but, we just wanted, procedurally, that we hope that the board approves those, that's, that's all.
And just for the information, yeah, what, what is the threshold that the board needs to approve, if this is not coming from the federal or state?
Ordinarily, the bid threshold is forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand?
Right, but I don't know what you approved when you approved your use of the state contract, that's what I need to see.
So basically, anything if it's not from state or federal?
Yes, forty-four is max.
Anything over forty-four thousand needs to be approved by the board, just need to confirm.
Right, and as I said, and, but I just, with the caveat, I need to see what that resolution says.
Mr. Shi, anything else?
That's it.
Mrs. Conway?
No, I'm good.
Dr. Chen?
I'm good.
Okay. So at this time, we're gonna, oh, I'm sorry.
I can introduce that resolution?
I think that would come in board member discussion, I think.
That's a resolution.
As a resolution, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, hope can I, is this a good time to introduce that resolution?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, so, Dan, do you have it?
Yes.
Can you read that resolution?
Whereas on May sixth, twenty twenty, the Edison Board of Education adopted a two, two hundred seventy-seven point two million dollar budget for the 2021 school year, and whereas the 2021 budget adopted by the Edison Board of Education increased the tax label by approximately ten point three million, or four point five nine percent, and whereas the 2021 budget adopted by the Edison Board of Education included an increase of nearly fifteen million dollars from the twenty, nineteen, twenty twenty budget, and whereas the 2021 budget dedicated approximately nine million dollars for Lincoln Elementary School construction costs, and whereas in addition to the nine million allocated for the 2021 budget, the administration also has available two capital reserve funds, whereas the Edison Board of, Edison School District Administration has already utilized approximately three million from the allocated money for non-school construction-related expenditures, and whereas this, the administration for the Edison School District has confirmed that the planned school construction, Lincoln School will not move forward this year, and whereas the members of the Edison Board of Education are aware of the financial hardships faced by many Edison residents during the COVID-19 pandemic, including the loss of jobs, furloughs, and reduced employment hours, and whereas the members of the Edison Board of Education seeks to provide Edison residents with tax relief, be it resolved that the Edison Board of Education hereby directs the superintendent for the Edison Public Schools to release the, release the remainder of the approximately nine million allocated school construction costs, or approximately six million dollars, to the Edison taxpayers by way of a tax refund check, be it further resolved that the board further directs the superintendent for the Edison Public Schools to do so within sixty days of the passage of this resolution, be it further resolved that the board president and business administrators, board secretary are hereby authorized to execute the agreement. are hereby authorized to execute the agreements necessary to effectuate the refunding of money to taxpayers and to set forth above on behalf of the board. Be it further resolved that this resolution and the agreements shall be maintained on file and available for public inspection in the board's office.
Jerry, end of discussion?
We need to introduce this to the, to discuss first, right? You put on the agenda.
It has, there has to be a motion to introduce?
A, a motion to introduce?
A second and a discussion.
I couldn't hear that at all.
What?
Say again.
No, it has to be a motion to introduce. Jerry's making a motion to introduce this resolution. And I think Mrs. Pang seconded it.
So we can discuss.
So now we have a discussion.
Yeah.
So.
Do we need a call, a roll call to do this or no?
Yes.
To introduce?
Do you get a second?
We need a roll call to introduce. So, roll call?
Okay, Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
No.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko?
Yes, now this is just to discuss now?
Correct.
Okay. We didn't pass anything?
No, no, no.
Okay. So now discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Shi, you want to start?
Yeah, I want to, I want to just start this. So let's just make it very, very clear before I get into it. Lincoln School is the number one priority for the district. It's the most overcrowded school in the whole district. And if we want to expand any school in the district, Lincoln School is the number one. Okay? So Dan, and, 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 Dr. Bragan, I just have a couple of questions. So Dan, when we passed the resolution in May, was that true that $9 million was allocated for Lincoln School?
Yes.
Okay. So, Dr. Bragan, I had a, probably three phone calls with you. The latest one was this morning. As of this morning and now, is that my understanding correct that we have, we do not have a plan yet as to how to expand the Lincoln School?
The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting met and decided to give the project to the architecture, architect to come up with three different plans. That we are scheduled to meet the architect, Mr. Mashad.
Thursday. No, Friday, Friday morning.
Yeah, so as of, as of now, we don't have a plan yet.
I'm sorry?
As of now, we don't have a plan yet.
We have the SSP plan that was designed, but we would like to come back with the Finance and Facility Committee's suggestion with other options.
Okay. So we had, based on the conversation we had, did you agree that there'll be, even if we start this Friday to have a discussion with the architect, it's physically impossible that the Lincoln School will be built before June 30th? Is that a correct statement?
I would say that's accurate, that it will not be finished by June 30th.
Correct. So we will not be starting the construction before June 30th? Right?
I, I don't, I can't concur that it wouldn't be started by June 30th. That depends on whether and what the board and the finance committee decides moving forward.
Yeah, but even if we decide to do it, that because the design and approval process is going to take so long, and it's what is a highly likely scenario, because we had a conversation, right?
We did have a conversation, Mr. Shi, but I'll be honest with you, in the public here, if every conversation that I have with you is going to be part of a public board discussion, I will no longer have conversations. Because that's not, that's not what this is about. Do I think the Lincoln School could be completed by June 30th? No, I do not believe so.
Okay.
Do, can I unequivocally say in public that it will not be started if the Finance and Facility Committee chooses to move forward with a plan proposed by the USA Architects? That depends on weather, that depends on allotment of funds, that depends on a great many things that I am not comfortable weighing in either way at this point.
Okay. So is that fair to say that if we don't use our $6 million, that the money will be sitting in our bank account? Or it could be used for some other items?
You're asking me if it's fair to have the money in the bank account?
No, is it fair to say that $6 million will be either left in the bank account? Or it could potentially be used for something else?
I think the money's allocated to the capital project designated as the Lincoln School, and it should remain there. That's what I believe, and that's what I told you in our numerous conversations. That's what I said. But I am not the, the one that makes the decisions on the Board of Education.
Okay. So, um, so then, if, if, if we don't use our $6 million, when will the taxpayers actually see it? We're, we're going to be in the, in the surplus for this school year, right? Is that correct?
If we decide not to build the school, and that $6 million stays in capital outlay, at the end of June of next year, it'll flow into free balance. However, the 21, 22 budget will have been adopted in May. So that free balance, that excess free balance will not show up in the audit until December of next year, which means it would be tax relief in '22, '23.
Yeah, so it will be two years down the road if we do not spend the $6 million, right? So the, the question is, you know, how likely that the Lincoln School will be built with the $6 million with, you know, before June 30th? I don't think that's, it's highly possible. We can, we have, we can do the, the design. We have a separate line item for the architecture fee, right? That's the $600,000 that we have it.
Right.
So the architect can start the design, can start the approval process. By the time it's finished, it'll probably after June 30th.
The design for the, by the architect?
Design and approval.
Right.
Then they go out a bid.
Right.
That'll be after, after June 30th.
I can't say it'll take that long, but it could, it could.
Yeah.
But remember, we cannot award a contract to a bidder unless the funding's in place.
Correct, I understand.
So if we do something other than, other than that with our $6 million, we'd have to raise that $6 million from somewhere else.
Yes. So, so the question is, will, will it be used before June 30th?
Will it be used before that? If we encumber it, if we have a bid out, do we want to encumber it? Yes, it will be encumbered. It will not be spent until the construction's actually started. But it will be encumbered, which means it would not be able to be spent for any other reason for this year.
Yeah, but the thing that, if, if we cannot, if we're not going to spend that money, I would not want this money to sit in our account for two years, right? Because to me, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea for the government to hold this money for two years, just collecting interest, which right now is very low. I would rather to give the money back to the taxpayers so they can, you know, put, you know, food on the table or even pay for the internet cost. So that's what we are proposing here. All right, so if, if we can, um, give the, if we're not going to use this money before June 30th, let's just give it back. Can we give it back? If, if we decided that it's, it's not possible to, to, to build a school, give the timeline. Can we give the money back to the taxpayers?
The only way, to my knowledge, to give it back is to let it flow into free balance and give it back to them as tax relief in '22, '23.
So that'll be two years.
Can we send 40,000 people a check? No.
So that'll be two years down the road.
That's, that's, that's the way it works.
But we, knowing that possibly we cannot use this money, and we cannot give it back. So it's, this, to me, it's a procedural thing. There's something, can just something be worked out with the state or whatever to, to re-adopt the budget? Because we just re-adopted the budget last month, right? We took $3 million out of the, the, the Lincoln School because we got a, we got a cut on the state aid, right?
Yeah.
So, but we re-adopted the budget. Can we do something like this?
Not to my knowledge.
Maybe we could ask the attorney.
Well, let's ask the attorney, yeah, yeah.
Let's see if you can hear me through this. First of all, it's, I want to be, this fund is actually, it's capital outlay.
Correct.
It's Fund 12, and it is the restricted funds. So you can't move them at all without prior Executive County Superintendent approval. So the regulation that governs it says you have to get approval first.
Sorry to interrupt, but I, how, initially, we have $9 million, and right now, we have $6 million.
We just moved $3 million.
So the $3 million got moved, that's got governor's approval too?
What happened is, because of the way that the budget was structured this year, and because the district lost money during, because of the, the way that the state funding has fallen, so that the school district's budget went through June, the state budget is through, is from October 1st through June 30th. So you technically don't have your final state numbers until after this governor actually, the governor and the legislature actually adopt your budget. So this year has been, the budget process has been very fluid. So what they, what the, the Department of Ed did was they went back, they looked, they, the governor had to redo his budget, and he reallocated school funding. So the money that you thought that you were going to have, you didn't have, and Edison lost, I think approximately, Dan, I think it was approximately $3 million?
Yes.
In state aid. So the, the, what happens is, the commissioner issued a directive and said that these are your options in order to reduce your budget. So the districts were all told, if you were losing money, that you actually had to go back and re-adopt your budget. Short of a commissioner's order, there's no process for that, for actually going back and re-adopting your budget and re-certifying your tax levy. Because it's a, it's a two, two pieces to it. What happens, though, for capital outlay, if you want to move it, there is Executive County Superintendent approval, and you have to establish hardship, not defined in the statute, and the county superintendent would have to approve being able to take that money and put it someplace else. Short of a commissioner's order, there's no mechanism in the statutes to, for a school district to simply, and I don't want to say simply because it's complicated, to cut checks for, back to citizens. Because what happens, the whole school's funding structure process is the board adopts the budget, which now takes the place, if it's a November election, takes the place of the, of the citizens' vote. But they still treat it as though citizens have approved that budget. And when it did it, the district basically had to say, this is what we need for TNE, for thorough and efficient education. And the county soup approves that, then it comes back to you, then you have the hearing so that the public knows what it is that you're saying is necessary for thorough and efficient education. And then it comes back and you vote on it. So that's your, that's the budget that you strike. Once you strike that budget, it goes to the, the county, who then certifies your tax levy. So short of Department of Education specific approval, which is what it provides in the regulation, there's no mechanism to just do a check, like, for example, like they're trying to do in the state budget, where the state budget is trying to, to do a $500 rebate.
We're not talking about check, we just reduce the, the, the tax levy, you know, for the, for the remaining of the, of the, the school year.
Mm-hmm. And for that, you have to seek approval from the Department of Ed.
So, okay, so.
And, and so.
Seek approval from the Department of Ed?
Requiring a showing of hardship. We don't know how, and there's no definition, there's usually, usually when it's hardship, the money is actually going to something else. So for example, some unexpected, terrible catastrophe struck, and the district wouldn't have the money for it, and you wouldn't have enough money in surplus. That's usually what it was, when there's, when there's some form of hardship. It usually doesn't come in the, in the, along the lines of taxpayer hardship, which we understand is going on in this instance. But there's not a Department of Education statute or regulation that says that it can be done this way. So we just don't know, and I can't give you guidance on what the county office would call hardship.
Yeah, can we try this? Because, let's, let's be very honest, in Edison, that, that, you know, the, the council just approved a close 6% increase on, on the township budget. And the, the county budget is going up close to 9%, 10% somewhere, right? So, and if we have the, the money that was sitting here that we cannot physically use, can we try something to, to, to plead to the county and, and see if we can create a exception? You know, not, not a lot of districts have that luxury. You know, we unfortunately, you know, fortunately, we have a little bit there. So can we try to, to, to go that route and try to apply?
Yeah, let's hear from other members.
Yes, yeah.
Elizabeth?
I would just like to say, I got this this morning.
Yes.
And now that I'm hearing all these what ifs and could we try, I would actually like to move to table this and look into and question more of what can we do, what are we allowed to do before we move forward with this?
Okay. Let me give comments from everyone else since we're in the discussion stage still.
Yeah.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes. Quite frankly, I am very tired of Mr. Shi's grandstanding at every meeting to make Mr. Mashad look bad, to make Dr. Bragan look bad, and keep promising the community, as he did in a letter that went out recently as part of his team, saying that they're going to save the taxpayers' money, when in fact, it can't be done. That money has been allocated for a school. And as soon as the pandemic quiets down and we can move forward, that money should stay in the pot for the school. We have not, thank you. We have not done anything in the last year since the, the.
Pandemic.
The pand, no, no, no.
Referendum.
Our, not a referendum, a referendum was defeated. And here we are, three years down the road, and still no additions to the buildings. So I would like Mr. Shi to stop hammering people up here who are doing their best, stop making promises that he cannot keep, and stop his politicking in a Board of Education meeting, because that's what he's doing.
Anything else? Mrs. Patel, Mrs. Podolsky, raise your hand if you have something to say or anything?
Yeah, I do have something to say, but are we voting on this right now?
No, not yet, nope. There was, there was a comment that we may have a motion to table, but we're still in the discussion stage of the resolution.
Okay, so I guess I just will say what I wanted to say. So we always talk about the difference between the north and south end of town, and I, I believe this is our chance to really do something to help the south end of our town. Lincoln School is, is our oldest school and has had infrastructure problems for years, as far as I understand it, including not even having enough working toilets in that building. And I believe it was a prior superintendent who invested in improving that situation. But that school continues to have some significant problems, including being way over capacity size. So my concern is that if we don't do something significant now, we leave open that possibility that we may never have this money again, and we may never actually be able to improve Lincoln School. Lincoln School. That, to me, outweighs giving back approximately a hundred and nine dollars to the average taxpayer two years down the road. So elementary school lays the foundation of a child's entire education, and to me, that is worth investing in. And if, if the motion is to lock in that money specifically for Lincoln School, I'm for that, but giving it back, I don't think I can support. So that's kind of where I'm at, at the moment.
Thank you, Mrs. Patel. Mrs. Podolsky?
Yeah, kind of the same thing. I cannot believe that the small amount of money taxpayers could get back, if it were possible, however long it takes, whatever hoops we have to jump through, would be worth depriving the students of Lincoln School of being in a decent school, just a decent school, not a good or spectacular school, just getting a little bit of what the rest of the town is getting. And I feel like maybe we can't get it done by June 30th of this year because of the pandemic, but if we don't start on it, we'll never get to it. So I would not be in favor of this.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mrs. Bank.
Just procedure wise, I, I remember I heard before I even become a board member, we have, it has happened before that the board has, or the school district has given some money back to the taxpayers. How was that done? Do you guys, any of you remember?
I don't remember that while I've been on the board. Jerry's, I think, the longest board member here with that.
We, we had some extra state aid, right then, a one point four million dollars.
The state had additional state aid.
One point six, something like that.
They gave it to us in July of that year.
Correct.
And they gave us three options. One of them was to re-adopt our budget, but that was a state recommendation, that wasn't something that we did on our own. And we did give it back as tax relief. That was Dr. O'Malley's recommendation, and the board went along with it.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so the thing is, you know, there's no way in here, I'm saying that we're not building Lincoln School, okay? It's number one priority. The thing is, are we going to use the money before June 30th? That, that's, that's, that's the key, right? So, you know, if, if I, if I remember correctly, even, even Shivi, when, when we were talking about the budget in May, it was her, actually, her suggestion is that, you know, we're going to look, because there's a potential of state aid reduction, so if we, the money is to, to, to help in case we, we have a reduction on the state aid, if we have some extra, let's see if we can give it to the taxpayer. So if you, if you go that, you, you can, you know, watch the tape, it's right there. So, so that's, that's the thing that, that we try to see is, is there any way that this can be done? And if we cannot, if we're not going to use this before June 30th.
Okay. I just had, I'm sorry.
No, just, I mean, I did say that, but I also said that, you know, anything that is safety related, you know, like sinking hallways in the kitchen and all of those things, we need to address those. I mean, I did say that the reason why I voted yes on the budget was that I wanted to keep this money, should we have a cut in state aid, we had money to kind of fill in that gap. So absolutely, I mean, I, I do understand taxpayers are, you know, hurting, we, we need some type of tax relief. And so, but again, now that I'm hearing, Dan, about the money will not be in the hands of taxpayers until 2023, and it's only going to be like a hundred bucks, I mean, can we do things in a way that we can actually, next year, when we have, you know, the budget, we try and, you know, build in whatever efficiency and whatever savings we have, so we can do both. We can, you know, provide the tax relief as well as do the safety component of Lincoln School. And, I mean, I just had a question about what happens, Dan, when the money goes in free balance? You said, should we not use the money until June 30th, the money goes in free balance?
Correct. And it carries there until the following year, when you put your new, your new, it's 2022, 2223 budget together.
Mm-hmm.
And keep in mind, this year's budget, we applied five point eight million dollars worth of surplus to help fund this tax, that was, that was tax, tax, that's what we're talking about here, tax relief.
Correct.
Two years ago, we put five point seven million in.
That was 2018.
This year, we put five point eight million in.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating that we're going to probably do the same thing next year.
We have ten million dollars from, from the, the previous school year.
Mm-hmm.
Ten million dollars surplus, right? Somewhere around ten million dollars.
Right now, yeah.
That will go into next year.
Yes, yeah, correct.
Okay.
I'm allowed to carry two percent, which is about four and a half million, and anything above that will have to be used for tax relief, correct?
I mean, we, we need to provide tax relief. The question is how and what is most efficient, and, you know, maybe we can look into that.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm totally for, you know, providing the tax relief, but as well as addressing the safety issues at Lincoln School.
Yeah, we, we need to have a plan.
Okay.
Right now, we need to come up a plan, how are we going to tackle it? So the thing is that, you know, are we going to have the, the plan in place, then we can have the bid out before June 30th?
Okay.
That's, that's the question here.
Mm-hmm.
We got a meeting with the architect on, next Friday at 10 o'clock. We'll have a better answer for you at that point in time to find out how soon we can get this moving.
Okay. Dr. Chen has a comment.
Yeah, I just want to express some of my concerns.
Sure.
So, like, back in May, when we approved the budget, we promised the taxpayer that we will use this nine million dollars to fix Lincoln School. So, so now, because of the pandemic and the state funding and all the stuff, now it becomes six million. Okay, we, we are still, we're still not, are not doing anything for the school, and maybe along the way, there are other things coming, and then that six million becomes like a three million, and then becomes zero million. Then, when it's time to build a school, we still don't have the money, and then we ask for the money again, for the, from the taxpayer, then, then it's not, seems like we're not trustworthy of our money. So is there a way that to guarantee that, that we, we will have enough money to, to build the school without asking for extra money again from the taxpayer?
I can guarantee you, no matter what it comes out to, we will not be going back to the taxpayer for any additional funding. Right now, once we meet with the architect and he tells us what we can do, and we already told him, we want to take out any of the fluff that was in the SSP plan, the renovations for the offices, things like that, we only want things that are going to help with the overcrowding at that school, and give them a gym, and give them a cafeteria, which is what all the other elementary schools have. But all the other stuff comes out. So that thirteen million that originally was in the SSP plan, we anticipate that coming down quite a bit. But we won't know that until we actually give him the copy of the plans he actually gives us, back, the back to revised plans.
But then, yeah, but this nine million already becomes six, six million, right? Because of the pandemic.
Right.
If the pandemic continues, and we don't know when it's going to stop, if we find out we need to buy more MacBooks, because I heard there's, there might be a plan to buy MacBook for every student, then where does that money come from? Are we guaranteed that the six million won't be touched? Is there any guarantee that the six million dollars for Lincoln School will never be touched? If we're, we need more money, where, where do we get money from?
Number one, I'm not allowed to move the twelve, Fund 12, six million, I cannot use that for, for computers or anything else, because it's, it's earmarked for capital improvements. So I couldn't move that unless I went to the county office and I had to show hardship for some reason or other, which we don't have. The only other way, if we, if, if the six million is not enough, our other option is to appropriate from our capital reserve.
My biggest thing is, I realized the referendum went down, but as an elected official, I feel that we had to do something for Lincoln, that's why I was always pushing it. I realized that we did lose three million because of state aid, and we had to do it there because it didn't affect the actual action of the schools. As a retired citizen, I realize that we pay a lot of taxes, but at the same time, we need to be reasonable. And that's why I'm asking for, to table, so this way, Mr. Shi, we can meet with USA, see what can be done, and we can move forward. If it turns out that it's beyond us and that we can't do it, then we, we go in a different direction. But right now, I don't think it's feasible to go in this direction. And I want those children, there's over nine hundred children in that school, that truly need us to think about them and do something for that school, and I would hate to be one of those people that were get, was getting back a hundred and nine dollars instead of a child getting a cafeteria, or a gym, or a proper kitchen that they're going to school for. So I, I really wish you would be patient until we can see from the architects. And we can move forward. We've been at a stalemate since March. There was really not much we could do, because we couldn't even get together. And now we're talking about it, and we want to move forward. I don't want to go in a negative direction, I want to move in a positive direction. So I'm just asking, give us the time, table this, have them meet with USA architects, see what they can come up with. If it's reasonable and we can move forward, this is the time to do it. Who was just telling me today that, was that you, Ralph? Your son got a mortgage, and his mortgage interest rate was fabulous. I'd hate to turn around and, and lose a chance of getting it at a, a better rate. And if there's people out there that want to go back to work, maybe this is the time where we can move forward in a quicker pace, because people want to work, we've got a better mortgage, and we've got a plan in place. So that's why I'm asking you, give us the chance, table this, so we can come back with better figures and a more stable plan.
Okay. I, I just want to make.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
The last, oh, you have one more comment?
Yeah, I, so the thing is, let's, you know, USA has been very, very slow on this, right? So what if it comes back, that they said, you know, it's not possible to bid, to, to go out and bid this year? Are we open to revisit this?
Absolutely.
Well, that's why we moved to table.
Right.
Rather than saying no.
Mr. Shi, I just want to make my comment, and I think.
Yeah, this is, I introduced it for discussion.
Right.
And I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Table it.
I just want to put my thirty seconds in or so. I did speak to Mr. Shi today, we had a very good conversation about it. I spoke to all the board members, pretty much, and I don't think there's a board member here, including Foul and Carroll, that doesn't want to help the taxpayer. Absolutely. I mean, we want to do whatever we can, because we know times are tough for some, times are very tough for others, and, but we need some time to look at this. I mean, to Elizabeth's point, you know, if we can get USA to move quickly and get us something quickly, and we can do something by June, but then again, we got to look into the legal aspects of everything, you know, what we can do. If we can move this resolution forward, per Mr. Shi, and we could work through the legalities of going through the county soup and the state and so forth and so on, I don't think there's a board member here that would say we shouldn't do it. So I think, I don't know if Mr. Shi wants to pull this for now, or we want to take a, a vote to table, but that's be up to Mr. Shi since he introduced it.
Yeah, because in here, we did say within sixty days, right?
Right.
So if, we, we need something coming back to the board.
Right, we need to find out the legalities.
What is the plan is, what is the timeline?
Mm-hmm.
And how much is it going to cost us, right? Because, you know, if Dan's talking about removing some of the remodeling stuff, internal, let's see what it is, right? And, you know, if by the end, by, by, after that meeting, from USA, from Pete, who comes back and say, hey, you know.
It's X amount of dollars.
We cannot do it.
Right.
Right? Or we, we need more money, but that's a different story, hoping not, then let's revisit this.
Yes, I, I agree. We all agree. I think we all agree.
The reason to introduce this is, let's visit this, 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 this topic.
Right.
And, you know, let's, let's discuss it.
Right.
In public. It's not a closed session discussion.
No, no.
Unfortunately, that's why, so we cannot discuss in, in close.
Right.
It has to be a full board discussion.
Absolutely.
So that's why it's, it's here.
And I also want Hope to look into what we need to do if, when we revisit this, if we revisit this, if we don't go with the SSP plan or whatever, USA architect. So do we want to pull this for now? I mean, it's up to you, Mr. Shi, or we could have a motion to table too.
Yeah, as long as we have a deadline that will come back from the architect.
Okay.
With a date and a cost.
Okay.
Shortly. And if we're willing to, if we're willing to revisit this, then I can pull it, yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm willing to revisit it, and I think everyone else is. The architect, you're meeting next Friday, correct?
This Friday.
Which is October.
This Friday.
Oh, this Friday?
Yes.
So would we be able to get something by the end of October?
We, we'll know more Friday when we speak with.
Okay. So yes, I mean, I, I'm in agreement.
Yes.
Counting, I mean, Elizabeth's shaking her head. I, I, we, we could revisit it, for sure.
Okay.
So will you pull it?
Yeah, I, I can pull it, let's, let's have a discussion.
Right.
Let's hope that we can have something at the next board meeting.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll revisit this.
Yes, absolutely. We're going to push Dan and Dr. Bregan to.
Yeah, the, the end of the thing is, are we going to use this, this six million dollars?
Correct.
You know, we need a, we need a, we need to fix Lincoln School, number one priority, that's what I said.
Correct.
But are we going to use this before June 30th?
Okay. Or we have a plan before June 30th, or a bid, or whatever, you know, we need to have done, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are, are we going to, you go out and bid before June, because the money needs to be there.
Right.
I, I know that.
And I know, I know Elizabeth is working real hard with the finance and facilities meeting, this was a, a major topic at the last meeting, so, and she'll go over it in her meeting notes when we get to that point.
Yeah, that's why I, I saw the meeting.
Yeah.
That's why I, I, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're going to pull this for now, leave it as an open item for discussion at the next meeting, or before, and we'll go from there. Okay, Mr. Shi? Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, now, we're up to the public comments section. Please, when you come up, name the usual, you get six minutes.
Resolutions only, right? This is just.
Oh, we got it.
Resolutions only.
Who needs to withdraw?
Mr. Shi just.
Mr. Shi said he did withdraw. Mr. Shi withdrew, yes. Um, oh, well, you have to vote on the resolutions first, I'm sorry.
No, public comments on resolutions only.
Oh, public comments, that's right.
On resolutions only.
Resolutions only.
Oh, resolutions only, yes. So when you come up for public comment, raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you, come up, name, you have six minutes. Please keep it only to the resolutions, only at this time to the resolutions.
The resolution.
And we'll go from there. All right, anyone from the public? Mr. Baker?
I'm going to take the mask off for this time. Brett Baker, 140 Grandview Avenue, just a couple of questions related to the resolutions. The first, really, really, really appreciate Dr. Bregan, your leadership around this partnership with, did I hear you right? It's Middlesex College now?
That's the name change you're looking for, yep.
Yeah, I'll have to get used to that. Phenomenal, phenomenal push, and appreciate your leadership in staying focused on that. I do think it's incredibly valuable to graduate from high school with an associate's at no cost of yourselves, and if for nothing else, if my taxes are going to increase every year, let it be so that Roshan can graduate with an associate's in thirteen years. So thank you for that. Question around the revised dates, on October 15th, I see that there's a caucus meeting. The board website also says that that's the meeting you guys are also voting on, amended, addendums to the superintendent's contract?
No.
Is that no longer valid?
There's no, there's no anticipated action at that meeting, that's a work session. We're going back to the whole two meaning thing, so that particular topic that you're speaking about will be discussed amongst us in closed session first, and then at the open meeting, the public will have comments.
Cool, okay, because it was still on the website, just as a heads up, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We, we have to notify, we have to advertise that thirty days in advance, is what we were told, so.
Beautiful. Last question, just related to the resolution on professional services, just a question, of the ninety-five vendors that are listed here, is there a way of figuring out how many of them are redundant? The reason I ask is that before I got bored trying to count, vendor sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, thirty-one, thirty-five, thirty-eight, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-three, seventy-nine, ninety-two, and probably a whole lot of others are all related to home instruction of a whole lot of different values, and so I'm just wondering if, like, we could get some clarity, a tenth of these vendors all handle home instruction, I'm just curious, through the board president to, you know, Mr. Mashad or Dr. Bregan, like, what is the decision-making process? Because I counted at least twelve vendors that do home instruction, like, how do we determine who to use, where do we use them? Because I saw some as much as a hundred and some as few as forty-five, so I'm just curious what the decision-making goes into there.
Dr. Cronklin could probably provide you a more direct comment than that, because most of that falls under the area of special services, but I know from our past experiences, there's a couple of things there. When someone comes in for an independent evaluation or things like that, we have to have board-approved vendors they can look at. So that's one for some of the testing areas that you see, and there is a wide variety of prices, depending on what type of assessment it is as well. And the same thing with home instruction, sometimes we're forced to home instruction situations, I'll give you an example, somebody's placed by the state in a, in a residential program that's not really near where we are, and we're obligated to have that person get home instruction via whatever vendor is in that hospital location or things like that. So probably, most likely, Brett, a lot of these come from past experiences and past things that we've used either through litigation or through our own practices, but there's no reason why we can't take a look at it and see if we could fine-tune those. You know, the, the perspective has been in the past, it's better to have more in case you need them. Like, we're not paying anybody today, we're just approving them for you should the need be, but we could definitely take a look at it.
Just creating the Rolodex of vendors we could.
Correct.
Okay. Just, was just curious what the decision, because I was like shocked to count how many vendors we use for home instruction, familiar from my own experience of like, that it is a difficult process to go through and so on and so forth, it's just a surprise how many we use, so hopefully.
That's fair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Resolutions only. Mr. Hyble.[1700.01] Mr. Hyble, you feel okay? You feel okay?
Yeah.
Okay, you're a little slow today. Looks like you're a little hobble-y.
No.
Okay.
Andrew Hyble, Howard Avenue, Edison, I'm here speaking as the negotiations chair for the Custodians Association. On page four, I would like to thank you for hiring five custodians, we've been short eight. But one of them is being hired at step six, and in our contract, we have step advancement language that says people will be advanced a step if they're actively on the payroll. So you can't advance somebody if they're not already working. So I was wondering if you can revise that to be hired at step one, maybe we can look at it down the road and, because you can't take the money away if you hire them at step six. You can always give them, if you come to an agreement down the road, we can always pay them the extra money at another meeting, but we can't take it away if you approve it tonight at step six.
Gotcha, so Dr. Breg?
Is that it, Ms. Sam?
Oh. Is that the only question you had?
Oh, for that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We'll look into that, I reviewed that with actually the, the president of your association, and his interpretation of that language is different than what ours was. So we'll have to let that sort itself out. I can't discuss an individual.
I, I understand that, I was just hoping that maybe the board would reconsider and hire the person at step one tonight, because you can always do an, an adjustment down the road, but you can never take money away once you approve it at that level. So what I'm asking is if you hire the person at step one, and maybe next month or two months down the road, if we come to have a further discussion about it, you can always give the person that money, but if you approve them at step six, at step six now, you can never take the money back away. So I'd ask the board if they would look into that and maybe hire all the custodians on page four at step one. Thank you, because we're gonna, if we don't, you know, we, only avenue we have is going with a grievance. And, you know, we'll have to go to court, and Hope's gonna be busy, and Jonathan's gonna be busy, and just to give you a little heads up, we did have this with a teacher, with the secretary under Dr. O'Malley, and it did go to court, and it was ruled in the teachers' union favor, so I would hope you would consider hiring all of them on step one. Thank you.
They are step one.
Doesn't it say step one?
Step one. Step four.
Hmm?
Step one. Yeah, this, everything else is step one.
Oh, this one? Okay.
Without getting into specifics for the board, we could discuss this if you wanted in, in private. I don't want to talk about it publicly, but there's contract language that was identified that I reviewed with the president of the association. We interpret it differently, and I'd be more than happy to discuss it individually with you as board members, but this person has not been raised, I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss publicly. We feel we're in the right, though, and if need be that there is a grievance filed, we'll follow that procedure. And as you know from my short time here and the 10 months I've been here, we've not gotten a litigation on any of those. So that wouldn't be the case with this one either.
Okay. Anyone else from the public on resolutions? Okay. All right, so we'll close the public portion on resolutions, now we're gonna take votes. So the first vote will be personnel-labor relations. It's 1A, if I can get a motion. Mr. Shi, Dr. Chen, roll call, or discussion first? Roll call? Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, next is item two, administration A through H, A through H. Motion. Mr. Shi and Dr. Chen again. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Item three, curriculum and instruction, A and B. Can I have a motion, please?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry.
On what? On this curriculum?
Curriculum, go ahead, we'll make a motion in a second, then we'll have discussion.
Oh, no, 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 just a question, but I can ask that.
Yeah.
Oh, motion?
Motion, Mr. Shi and Ms. Matiker. Discussion, questions?
I, yeah, sorry, I just forgot, I should have asked earlier. I just, look at the, the curriculum guide approval.
Mm-hmm.
The grade six, seven, and eight, they're all exactly the same.
No.
I don't see any details. I see the, the higher level, the high school curriculum guide, they are, I mean, I like them, they, they have the details explaining what's the, what are the new curriculum guide is, but six, seven, and eight for the English, they're all the same. I just wonder if you guys have seen it, the curriculum, when you approved it?
There was a presentation at the curriculum meeting, fabulous, by the way. And I know Ms. Polakowski and Mrs. Benindar.
Mad beer.
Mad beer. Said they were gonna forward to us, and I haven't seen it yet, but they did give us a presentation of it last week, and it.
For the middle school?
Yeah, six, seven, and eight. It, basically, it was a focus that it would build upon itself, and it involved a lot of social, emotional, and it was, it was, I was very impressed. But I was, I was actually going to look at it today, and it wasn't in my email, and they had said they were gonna forward it to us.
But are we, what's your, what's the suggestion from the curriculum committee?
Yes.
So, so many of the changes that were made were basically, and I have it actually in my minutes for today, they were associated by the need to accommodate remote learning. So some of the concepts were similar, like very minor tweaks, like incorporating social, emotional learning or technology. I can send you my PowerPoint, we have it in the email, actually.
I didn't get it.
Even I thought I didn't get it, but then I realized I did get it, so I'll, I'll forward it to you. It's, all the details are there in that presentation. And, and the textbook for chemistry, is that for?
That was the one we tabled last meeting?
Yeah. Oh. Yeah, we had, we're approving it retroactively.
Yeah, we tabled it last meeting because no, the committee didn't see the book, so now we're gonna approve it.
Okay, is this for regular level, honor level chemistry?
I can't hear you, Shannon.
What, what level is that chemistry book that we're approving?
It's 10th grade, level one and level two, I believe.
So it's same book for both regular chemistry and honor level?
Yeah, it's basically, yeah, I mean, this was a pilot which was actually approved last year when I was not on the board, and so we only approved the textbook this year, but the pilot took, was approved last year for this book.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right, did, did I get a motion in a second, I think I did, right?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. I just want to know, Mrs. Patel and Mrs. Budowski, if you have anything, please, I could see you, so you could raise your hand in case you have comments, I don't want to exclude you guys or ladies. Item four, A, B, and C, pupil slash special services. Motion, please. Mrs. Maroni, Mrs. Conway. Discussion. Questions? No? All right, roll call? Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Last item, five, finance, A, B, and C. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Budowski? Yeah, show your hand.
Yes.
And Mrs. Conway. Questions? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Committee reports, curriculum and instruction.
Okay, I thought I was going last.
So you're first on the items, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna be giving committee reports for three meetings, August 20th, August 27th, and September 19th. All the meetings were held via Zoom. So for, on August 20th, in attendance were Gail Paulaski, Baninder Mahabir, Falguni Patel, Elizabeth Conway, Yuna Chen, and Shivi Prasad Madhukar. The committee discussed revisions to the curriculum guide for 2020 school year. Many of these changes were necessitated by the need to accommodate remote learning resources. At the elementary level, this includes changes to ELA, social studies, math, GNT, technology, health, and science integration and physical education. It was discussed that since the district was unable to administer an entrance test for GNT because of COVID-related school closure, all students will participate in the GNT program. The committee also discussed changes to curriculum guides for the following subjects at the secondary level, integrated math B, statistics AP, calculus AP, algebra I, physics honors, chemistry level one and two. Introduction to Interior Design, this actually is a new course offered at the high school level and is available to seniors only. Tomorrow's teachers, this is also a new course, it's an elective course, and will provide resources for attracting, placing, and retaining well-qualified individuals in the teaching profession. Students will learn fundamentals of education by participating in district-level field experience. The course is also open to seniors only. Middle School World Language, Middle School Dance I, this is also a new course. This will provide an introduction to dance, it's an elective course, and no previous training is required. The committee also discussed AP Capstone. In addition, the committee discussed the rollout of touchable Chromebooks for first and second graders. The delivery has been delayed because of unforeseen reasons. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met again on August 27th, just for barely 15 minutes, in a, at 2 o'clock. In attendance were Gail Paulaski, Baninder Mahabir, Carol Borowski, Falguni Patel, Beth Maroni, and Shivi Prasad Madhukar. The committee discussed the rollout and details about a new chemistry book for high school. I think I made a mistake, it's for honors, Shannon, your question, the chemistry book, it's not level one and level two. Finally, the Curriculum and Technology Committee met again on Friday, September 19th, from 1:00 PM to 2:25 PM. In attendance were Dr. Bregan, Gail Paulaski, Baninder Mahabir, Ralph Barca, Christopher Conklin, Elizabeth Conway, Yuna Chen, and Shivi Prasad Madhukar. Ralph Barca gave an update on technology issues in view of the remote learning environment. The committee learned that issues are more persistent at the elementary school level. Students with Lenovo Chromebooks are facing more issues than, than those with Dell Chromebooks. To address the problem, devices are being swapped as needed. Chromebooks work great in the classrooms, however, there are issues when they're being used for distance learning. Some issues are prevalent because of Google outages. The committee discussed using backups such as Zoom and WebEx. In addition, the district had ordered devices earlier in the summer, which are going to be delivered on October 14th. This should alleviate some of the ongoing issues. Login for seventh grade math textbook was discussed, multiple logins were not allowed, hence some students were not able to access their textbooks. The issue has since been resolved. The committee also discussed hybrid rollout from October 19th. The district is confident of providing in-person learning for those who choose in-person, unless she, the state changes some of the existing rules. The committee also discussed ways in which instruction time could be increased without compromising safety. This included discussion on block scheduling. In addition, a survey will be going out to parents in the next few weeks, asking about their preference for school attendance in marking period two, whether they would want their children to study remotely or in person. The committee also discussed sending out another survey to parents to understand issues that are persisting and what is going on well, so we can continue to improve the experiences of our students. The committee discussed some curriculum revisions again. This includes business management, family consumer science, college composition and literature, English language arts for grades six to eight, and career and vocational readiness. The committee discussed PSAT administration, juniors will take it on October 17th, it's a Saturday. The test will be administered in person using CDC guidelines. Transportation will be provided to anyone who needs it. PSAT for eighth graders will not take place in December, the test will be administered to them in January. No decision has been made whether it will be online or in person. If it is online, the test will not be used for placement. Finally, 10th grade will not be administered PSAT in 2020. The administration will make a decision after the 11th grade PSAT. It's likely that a test may be administered in January 2021. The school district will send out an informational letter as soon as a decision is made. The committee also discussed the need for hard copy textbooks. After being all day on computer, the students need a break from the screen. The committee discussed updating the website with names of all textbooks for all grades for informational purposes. Finally, the committee discussed the ELA pilot program at the elementary level. The committee was informed that it's no longer a pilot, but in a transition phase. Every teacher is working extremely hard, and the district has received positive feedback so far. That would be all, Ms. Eriko.
Thank you very much for all those meetings, any questions, sir, Ms. Matiker?
Yeah, I just confirmed that we will be having a survey from the district to the parents about their learning experience from September to whatever the survey we issue.
Yeah, that's what we talked in the committee, yeah.
So the, the question, will, will some of the, the parents involved in designing the survey to make it more prep, you know, to, to more, their, their day-to-day issues? Or this is gonna be like before, totally done by the, you know, the central office?
I, I mean, we didn't discuss the nuances of the survey, but the broad idea of figuring out what's working well and what's not working well, so that we could use the feedback to improve the experience for the students. But we still have to discuss the details, but we kind of agreed on having a survey administered.
Yeah, because if, you know, if you just, people type in text, it's a little bit harder to analyze. You gotta design it nicely, so we'll, we'll let you guys handle it. But the other thing is, we have a safe return committee that's headed by Falguni, right? Is that called a safe return committee? That's what it is, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's an ad hoc committee that Mrs. Patel is, is heading up.
Yeah, so you guys gonna collaborate on this?
Yes, yes.
I mean, I don't think the curriculum committee is doing this, this was just a suggestion that we made, but I, I guess it will be the safe return committee and, and Dr. Bregan and the administration who would, you know, do it. I don't think the curriculum committee would do that.
I know Mrs. Patel is heading up that committee, and on it is Mrs. Conway, Mrs. Pang, and myself. Actually, I think we have a meeting, when do we have that meeting, Ms. Patel?
Wednesday.
This Wednesday, actually, so we're gonna get some feedback from parents.
Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
No. Wednesday.
The 24th.
Oh.
Check it out, all right?
24th is Thursday.
Don't confuse me.
Why I put it in the wrong box?
Hold on.
No, 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 it's on the 23rd.
23rd.
Oh, it is Wednesday.
It is Wednesday.
Okay, I'm gonna have to change my date.
Yes, it is your return meeting, yeah, I have it in my phone.
I mean, this, the reason, I mean, just, we just want to make sure that every parent in the district gets that survey.
Yeah, absolutely.
And goes through the formal process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Finance and Facilities, Mrs. Conway?
I have Thursday, so I better change it.
You better change it. You got my Zoom meeting thing, right?
What's that?
You did get my Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
The Finance and Facilities Committee met on 9/15/2020 at 4:00 PM. In attendance were Ralph Eriko, Yuna Chen, Shivi Prasad Matiker, Dr. Bregan, Dan Mashad, William Kalabas, and myself. The committee discussed the purchase of the smaller thermal monitoring cameras to attempt to have them funded by FEMA aid. 14 machines would be ordered by 9:15, totaling about $40,000. The district had applied for public assistance for the COVID-19 expenditures. FEMA has provided the application and directions to apply for the federal aid. All COVID-19 expenses that were not funded by the CARES Act or the digital divide funding will be submitted for reimbursement. The committee confirmed their commitment to pay the bus contractors 60% of their contract amount amount for time that the district is providing remote instruction, and this is the same percentage that the district agreed to pay last year so far. The committee discussed, and this was an essential part of the meeting, the committee discussed the Lincoln School addition that had been allocated in the 2020-2021 budget. The committee instructed the administration to have the district's Architect of Record, USA Architects, prepare schematic drawings and a construction budget for the board to consider. The budget currently has about $6 million available for the project. In the event that the amount exceeds $6 million, the district's capital reserve account can be used to fund the balance. Number five, the committee discussed the cricket pitch at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. Relocation and upgrading was considered. The district may want to initiate adding cricket as an organized sport for our middle and high schools. And the committee did ask if a survey could come out to see what interest there is at the middle schools and high schools. The committee reviewed the district's current building use policy and application. The committee instructed the administration to evaluate the fee schedule to ensure that the district is covering its costs of operating the school during the rental period. This was something that I had learned we were supposed to be doing on a yearly basis, and I asked Mr. Mashad to give us the actual costs of what we are expending by renting our facilities versus how much the people are paying. We instructed that we don't want to make a profit on it, because everything that, you know, they're using it for is advantageous, but we just want to make sure that we're not losing on it and that money have to come out of our general fund budget that we could be utilizing elsewhere. So, Mr. Mashad is in the process of getting me that. The committee discussed the need to increase the technology staff to handle over 20,000 devices that the district currently provides to the staff and students. The administration is proposing an increase of three technicians. When seeing everything that's going on with all our technology, I don't know how it's possible that the number of men that are working right now could possibly do the job. So, all kudos to them, and hopefully we can hire the additional help that we truly need. Dr. Bregan did propose a car allowance for the attendance investigators. The attendance investigators use their vehicles extensively in the performance of their duties. The figure that was discussed was about $3,000 annually, and Dr. Bregan will discuss the possibility of preparing a sidebar agreement to their contract with the ETA. And being somebody new to the board, I never realized that how much was involved and that they were utilizing their vehicles, their insurance, their gas, their mileage. I know it was a change that was made a number of years ago to it. I don't know why they did it, other than pensionable money, but the committee felt that this was something that we needed to move forward on, and the meeting adjourned at 5:25.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Conway?
I just wanted to just add one correction. Since I, I think I joined the meeting about 35 minutes late, and I left immediately because I joined through Zoom and everybody was in person, so I couldn't hear anything. So, I would want to get my name, and I know that you gave me the update.
I gave you a private meeting.
Sorry? Yeah, both of us had another meeting later.
Yep.
So, technically, I was not present, because I had another work meeting, so I can't.
I saw your face.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were there for a while. Any other questions?
So, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Sheik.
Yeah, both present. So, Mrs. Conway, just for the first item, the $40,000, this is the one that we bid it before on the other smaller device?
Yes.
Okay. The question is...
It was under the threshold.
Okay. So, the question is about the three technicians. I know we're overloaded with work. Is this three technicians a permanent headcount, or this is a temporary contract?
I had asked that question, but I don't think the technology is going anywhere, to be honest with you. So, I can see it as a permanent fixture. We had talked about that.
Correct. One of it entailed a dedicated helpline, as if you would, you know, if you called Dell or a computer company, where you have someone on the line to walk you through it. You don't have that set up right now, so one of those positions would entail that, and the other two would be more tech support and tech service.
So, these are permanent headcounts?
Yes.
All right. Another question. I guess that's it.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, this is the other one, the cricket pitch. So, we're gonna do a, I'm glad that this is finally on the agenda.
We've been talking about this for a while.
Yes, so...
We're gonna go out and get prices.
We're gonna get prices. We, what is the thing about the survey that you mentioned? We are serving the interest and see if...
Well, I don't want, I would like to, at the same time, get prices to see how much it's gonna cost, but reach out to make sure that we have enough interest that we can prove, look, we're spending this money, but there's enough interest that it's worth the cost.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I have another meeting.
You have another meeting?
Yeah.
You gotta go now?
No, you want me to start?
Go ahead.
I just have the special ed meeting.
Oh, okay. Good. I didn't have that on my agenda. Go ahead.
Okay. On the date of the meeting was 9/17/2020 via Zoom. It was the special ed committee meeting. At the meeting was Carol Bedoski, Shivie Prasad, Falcone Patel, and myself, along with Dr. Conklin, Dawn Netzel, and Erin Madera, with those faces that I saw. I don't know if anybody else was there, so that's who I have. And what was discussed was the staffing to ensure that we have enough teachers that are working in school already with the special needs students classes. Schools, housing, these classes are all but Woodbrook and Lyndon now. Their evaluations are 90% up to date, and it's being done all in person. There was an update revision regarding the career and vocational readiness to the curriculum, which they gave a presentation, and it was really fabulous and earmarked for the students. Future meetings of the ESPAC were announced, and they're on the website, for 11/20, 2/21, 4/21, and 6/21. The specific dates will be on the website, and a future date for our committee meeting was to be determined. Dr. Conklin was going to talk to Dr. Bregan about it, and we adjourned at 2:25.
Very nice. Any questions on special education? Next item is, I think, my comments. Yes, announcement by president. So, our next meeting is October 15th. It will be in the Edison High School Auditorium. So, it will start at 7:00 p.m., so that will be our caucus meeting. And then our public action meeting will be on Tuesday, October 20th, Edison High School Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. So, now you can go to four meetings in the same week. Lucky you. If you want to go to both council meetings and then come to both Board of Ed meetings, you could have all the fun you want.
Ralph, are they both at Edison High?
Yes, because we're not gonna have the space at the Ed Center to...
The caucus room.
The caucus room. We wouldn't be able to social distance like we are here, for the most part, so. So, yeah, that's the president's announcements. Now, we're gonna open it up to board member open discussion. So, I'll start with Ms. Patel.
One thing, I don't have any.
Nothing? I think foul's fading a little. Long day, it looks like. All right. Ms. Madhukar, anything?
Just two questions that I forgot to ask at the curriculum meeting, and just something that parents have brought to mind, that when you, so, if, I know that we have a absence policy, or, you know, parents can sign off a student if that student's gonna be absent. However, what's the protocol for part-day absence? That's something we need to look into, like, you know, if you want to just be out for two hours if you have a doctor's appointment. And then second is, if in the middle of the class, somebody wants to go to a bathroom, like, you know, you typically go and go to the teacher and get a class pass. Is there a way to institute like an electronic class pass or something like that? And, yeah, so those were just two things that were...
It's funny you say that about the bathroom, because I did get a call from, I don't know if it was a teacher or a parent, saying the kid took his Chromebook or Apple into the bathroom with them. So, we kinda, we want to discourage that, by the way. But hey, I gotta give the kid credit, he didn't want to miss any part of the lesson, so kudos to him. So, maybe you just, you know, there's a way to just show a staff, you know, a, just a general picture. We don't have to see you live, you know what I'm saying? So, maybe just take a picture of yourself and post it that way. All right.
Just one more thing that I forgot. Somebody also asked me that what is the protocol if a teacher is absent? Do we have like a substitute teacher covering in, or it's just like you get a free period?
I think right now we have people covering the periods, so if someone's absent, we do, you know, they have period coverage. But I'll look into that. I'll look into those other ones, too. Good questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yeah. My daughter is a special ed teacher in Piscataway, and right now, I'm going over there every day to babysit for my granddaughter, who will be one-year-old on Thursday of this week.
Happy birthday.
And my daughter goes down to the basement to do her teaching, and she's on the computer and comes up at about 11:30 for lunch with a splitting headache. And so witnessing this firsthand, I just want to say to all the professionals out there and to our children, who are, I'm sure, experiencing the same kinds of headaches and, you know, just you get stiff when you're sitting for so long. So, I just hope and I pray that everyone is doing okay, and thank you, thank you to the parents and the staff for doing such a great job during this very difficult time.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroni. Mrs. Pang, any open comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sheik?
Yeah, just two quick comments. It's the, I see some of the parents talk about the break time, especially for the high school. We only have like a couple of minutes. If one teacher's a little delayed, then, you know, the other student goes to the other class, they might get delayed, so they might get dinged or something like that. So, there is a possibility we could add one or two minutes into the schedule. Second is, for elementary school kids, right now, the lunch, I think it's 1 o'clock, so it's a really long day for them to sit through. Is it possible we can add like a five, six minutes in the middle, like for a couple of periods, allow a snack time or something like that?
Or we could even allow them to snack during the lesson, you know?
I think they are.
They probably are, yeah.
A lot of them do.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's something to...
We could look at both of that. As a matter of fact, I think it came up with the administrative team.
Okay. And the other question is about, you know, we are, today, we're not talking about what's gonna happen on October 19th, right? So, we're gonna have our meeting before that. So, there's a concern from the parents is instruction time on the hybrid schedule. If we will go to hybrid schedule, can some other committee, I don't know which committee is gonna be, look into whether we can add some instruction time? Because right now, the old schedule was based on no in-school dining, so the policy relaxed a little bit. So, I want to see if we can, so that's why we're on a half-day schedule, right? So, moving, if we can look into, see if we can add some time into the schedule to add some instruction time.
We'll definitely take a look at that. And the in-school dining was one of the reasons, but not the only reason for that single session. But we will definitely, we had a discussion about that today as well.
Okay.
We'll get that information out as soon as we can.
All right. So, those are the two things.
Thank you, Mr. Sheik.
But, Dr. Bregan, we're gonna discuss that schedule in when some of the committee, right? I mean, I hope the board can have a chance to put some, have some input to that schedule, because we have been heard a lot of comments, suggestions from the parents, that the half-day schedule is not gonna work very well, because students basically losing half of the instruction time every day, the single session day, every day for the rest of the year. That's, that's, that's going to harm this, our school district.
Yeah, we could talk about that further, but in the same conversation, Mr. Sheik was just asking for more break times, because the synchronous instruction of being online is exhausting for the kids, any more break. And we're asking for the hybrid model to be totally, the teachers are gonna be teaching people in person as well as synchronous at home. I understand your saying about the instructional time, but it's not just time in front of a camera that counts either. We'll take a look at all that. You know, some of the parameters were about the lunch for the single session. It came up today that we were gonna take a look at that, and we'll share that with the board and get your input as well.
We have installed cameras in the classroom, so it's very possible that they can do real-time, like broadcasting or...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The cameras are in the classroom.
So, the in-school students and the students at home could have the same schedule, right?
Yeah, and all that is important, as we discussed before, but at some point, if 72% of the students are gonna be remote and at home, and I'm gonna be in the classroom, it's really difficult to not spend the time that those kids need as well, the remote instruction. That was part of the point at the end of the day, to have that catch-up with those students, whether that's in secondary or elementary. We'll talk about it. We'll take a look at it. The administrative team had some concerns and questions today, as we're getting close to pivot to that remote schedule, hybrid schedule, and we'll take the board's input as well.
And I just, as far as I heard, I'm not sure this small group session for middle, at least for middle and high school, I haven't heard much about it. I don't know anybody is doing it, any students is doing it. I haven't heard even single, one single case that a student signed up for it.
Okay. I'll get more information on that. I'm hoping that it is being done, as we had spoken about, and I'll report back out.
Sorry, one thing I missed. Talking about the schedule, is it possible we can consider block schedule?
I would say at this point, no. We don't have the time to make that change at this point.
No, not for, not for, if we're talking about hybrid, if we come to hybrid, is it possible we can talk about block schedule?
I mean, I'll discuss with the administrative team, but they've scheduled already. They've gotten students from the interest surveys for the marking period. As far as who's coming in and who's not, to then pivot to block is a totally, you're gonna throw out exactly everything that we have in place now, so the short answer is no, but I'll look into it.
How about for marking period two?
Block schedule?
Yeah.
Would that be then block schedule is when we come back full-time? I mean, that's a huge curricular change. I'm not saying that we shouldn't or maybe couldn't do that moving forward, but to do that now in a short notice, I don't think is the best way to do it.
I mean, we had done it for the last month, last year, we moved to blocks. I mean, even though it was not, it was asynchronous, we did do block scheduling then. I mean, one day, the kids were doing math and science, the other day, they were doing. So, basically, we had, I mean, I'm talking at the high school level.
The remote schedule.
Yeah, yeah, because elementary doesn't matter whether it's block or not, because, you know, it's the same teacher, so the teacher can adjust and accommodate. However, for middle and high, if there is block scheduling, then you can give more time to every period or every subject. So, otherwise, I mean, maybe we can try it for marking period two. I do understand.
How about third and fourth?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think it's... Instead of marking period, marking period two is coming pretty quickly, right? So, I don't know, just something to throw out there.
Yeah, consider.
Well, you brought that up at the curriculum meeting.
The curriculum committee, yes, I did bring that up.
And you had asked Mrs. Polakowski, and she had said she would look into it, but she didn't know the feasibility of it until she actually looked into it.
Yeah.
Because it's a completely different...
Right. Totally different.
It is.
Well, that would be my concern, that a move to block schedule, which many schools have done in their traditional schooling, when we're onsite and in person, to do that now when we're going to pivot to hybrid, and then hopefully at some point this year, come back to full-time in-person instruction. I think it's a heavy lift for the teachers to put all that in at once, because a block schedule is not just more of a time on an every-other-day basis, it's a change in an instructional paradigm, going from a 45-minute to an 85-minute block. Instruction has to be different, the curriculum pacing has to be different, and the, we actually did that in a school in which I worked, and it was a process, though it took a year, the planning and development of the schedule and then also of the staff. So, I'm not opposed to it, Mrs. Madhukar, but I don't know if we could pivot that quickly, but we'll take a look at it.
So, just one more solution or suggestion. If not everybody is doing a class during study hall, can the study hall time be used to increase the class time?
We'll take a look at it. I gotta, I don't know that's going to go to top of my head.
If we're going to the single session, then there's no study hall time. For high school, there is study hall. For a single-day session, that would be like 20 minutes? Oh, that's a good question. I'll have to take a look at that.
Great.
Right now, there is... That's 20 minutes, but even you distribute the 20 minutes to every period, that's only...
We could use that for snack time. Mrs. Conway?
I'm excited.
Well, you got nothing to say?
Yes, I have something to say.
Ah.
I just wanted to let you know that we have an employee in Edison School District that on October 15th will be turning 100 years old.
God bless her.
Her name is Evelyn Kiss, and her birthday is October 15th. Does that ring a bell? That's our caucus meeting at Edison High School, and kudos go out to Ms. Kiss. And I think we should make something special, and Dr. Bregan has told me that he would look into something, but at the same time, if anyone in the district would like to send good wishes to Evelyn, if they send a card to the Board of Ed, I will make sure that she gets the cards of appreciation for being such a responsible and wonderful person. I can't imagine working till I'm, I was 100, like, I didn't even make 70, so, but working to 100, and she loved every minute of it and working with the children, and I think we should make a special attempt to show our appreciation of her because of that.
Totally agree. And maybe we could do a resolution, Dan, you know, framed and all that kind of good stuff to recognize her for her 100th birthday and working in the school district.
And it's Evelyn Kiss, K-I-S-S.
Send Dan an email.
Put it in writing.
Put it in writing. Put it in an email, so we got the right spelling. All right? She works here at JP Stevens, I understand, as a lunch aide, I believe.
Trotwell's.
Yeah.
Trotwell's.
Trotwell's, I want, she works for Trotwell's, I'm sorry, she don't work for us. Anything else, Mrs. Conway? One more thing?
I just want to say, and we can't say it enough, I'd like to thank all the teachers, students, and parents that have given... that have given such a phenomenal effort to what we're trying to accomplish through this pandemic. As I speak to teachers and hear from them that they're working at least twelve to fifteen hours most days, and then you speak to parents and realize how much extra time and effort they have to put in to help their children with their education during this pandemic, and to every student that has put in their extra effort by learning through this pandemic, I appreciate every single one of them and pray to God that this doesn't last too long.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Dr. Chen, anything?
No.
No, okay. Um, just to echo, I think everyone's, you know, appreciation to all our staff members, you know, from our custodians to our facility managers, to our paraprofessionals, to our lunch aides, to our Trotwell employees, to the teachers and administrators. This is not easy, and as you know and see, um, and hear, we are doing a much better job than we did back in March, April, May of last year with the amount of PDI. Also wanna give some kudos out to our staff development team. Uh, I read those morning brews every morning, and I think they're fabulous, and with the ideas they come up with and then working with our staff. So I would like to thank everyone out there, uh, from the top to the bottom, um, from the bottom to the top. Uh, thank you for everything. Also, one thing Mrs. Conway didn't mention was that we had a meeting, uh, Mrs. Conway and I were invited to a PTO meeting at Herbert Hoover. Um, it was roughly about fifty parents on a Zoom meeting.
Yes.
Yes, so it was a great turnout. Not one complaint about how things are going. Yeah, you know, technical issues like, you know, Optimum's down, you know, Google froze or something like that, but nothing that we are in control of. As far as the instruction goes, a thousand percent better than last year. Their only concerns are how are we moving forward? Like Mr. Sheehan said, you know, October nineteenth, what's that gonna look like? How's busing gonna look? How's this gonna look? You know, are we gonna get another survey for the second marking period to allow us to get, get another choice to come back or not? We said yes, that will come out from the administration. They were, um, not totally sure, um, if they can come back now and change their mind, and the principal there, Mr. McGrath, who did a great job, said whatever you decided on August second, you have to stick with through the first marking period. Somewhere, I would think in the middle or end of October, a survey will go out again, similar or if not the same as the August second one, and say, listen, what's your choice for the second marking period? And then we'll move forward from there. But it was an excellent meeting, Mr. McGrath did a great job. Uh, the parents were happy. There were really no complaints about anything in particular about instruction or teachers not being online or not being there when their children needed them, and that was a good thing. So I just wanted to mention that. And so thank you to Mr. McGrath for having that great PTO meeting, or I'm not sure if they have PTO or PTA.
Oh.
Oh, PTO. Any, Mrs. Conway?
I'd just like to clarify something. When I say teachers...
You mean everyone.
I mean, everyone. Paraprofessionals, aides, secretaries...
Yep.
Uh, nurses, principals, because they're all part of that teaching of our children. And I consider them all, I don't say top to bottom either, they're all equal in my mind.
Absolutely.
And I, I wanted to make sure that they understood I wasn't specifically talking about the teachers.
Yeah, we lost Cowl for a second, but I think Mrs. Budowsky, you wanna say something?
Yeah. Yeah, I did. And the one peo- one group that, uh, Mrs. Conway, I think, forgot about, it, although she visited them on their first day, I'd like to welcome aboard our new hires. This has to be terrifying as a beginning teacher. In this crazy world, you have found the best place to get through the storm. But also, thanks and congratulations to our retirees. Enjoy yourselves after a job so well done. And then kudos and thanks to all district employees for going above and beyond in so many ways, and to the parents and the teachers. And I have to put them together because they're both doing part of the job now. And as overwhelming as it is for the teachers, it's even more overwhelming for the parents. Um, thanks for showing our students that when the going gets tough, the tough really do get going, but that you are there for them to learn, facilitating them as they take the lead. But most important, I wanna reach out to the students of Edison. Wow, you are amazing. I am so proud of you. You are learning and accomplishing more than you know. Distance learning, innovation, independence, and adapting to changes around you are making you into the best you can be, nothing less than excellence. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna...
One quick thing.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, folks in the audience, um, they're outside near the, um, the agenda. There are some boxes of, of a, a lot of little, um, what you call it?
Hand sanitizer.
Hand sanitizers.
Like this?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan gave me one.
This, this, that's, uh, made by, uh, one of the, uh...
Now I got one.
Yeah, one of the, uh, the JP student, who is a, um, tenth-year student. So what you do is, is a little thing, and you hook it over here. And this is what's supposed to do, is you can, you can put it on your lanyard or on your purse. So this is Naomi Quo, a, a tenth grader from, from JP. So when you go out, and make sure you, you, you take one, all right? Thank you to Naomi for, um, whatever she, she has, she has done to help everyone. Thank you.
Great job, thank you. All right, now we're gonna open up to public comments on anything you... Easy. Anything you would like. Some faces I'm gonna recognize and call you by name, others I'm just gonna say ma'am or suh. So again, six minutes, please be respectful. Um, and we'll start with the ladies first, so I think Ms., uh, White. Come on up, Mrs. White, I'm sorry.
Virginia White, Eleven Church Street in Edison.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
You can take that off if you like, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're at least ten feet apart.
You're so hard to breathe, and it makes your nose itchy, too. But I just wanted to thank you for your good judgment with the separating of the, uh, caucus meeting and the action meeting. Just like you said, Mr. Arico, you need that time to review what's, you cover a lot of ground at those caucus meetings. And I think with the, um, personnel agendas in particular, last month, we hired a new HR person. I don't know him, but it was at a higher, higher salary than the previous. And I know that how careful we are with, you know, uh, what is it? Qualifications and experience. So, but I, I do think they do need to, you know, just check things out as they come up. Um, I did wanna say thank you to Ralph Barca and that great team. They're working so hard, and I'm nervous.
No need to be.
And lastly, special needs. We had those three moms come up last meeting, and they were so concerned and so frustrated, and they were so compelling. I thought possibly at these meetings, maybe there could be a representative from the different departments, you know, so that they could address these questions. Those poor ladies were so upset, and you did your very best to try and help them, I know you did. So, um, you know, maybe it's a thought.
Okay.
Okay? And that's it. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Very well done.
Thank you.
You did that to us.
Yeah. Mrs. Wise? Oh, boy. Exercise is no good. It's dangerous.
Maria Wise, Thirty-three Parch Place. Um, I'm gonna start by saying thank you to a few people. Um, Beth Maroney, thank you for stating the painful obvious earlier. Um, sometimes the, um, politicking does waste some time and get in the way of the agendas and ideas at hand, um, and more important items that need to be discussed. And it's not an attack, it's just, I just wanted to thank Beth for that. Um, Falguni Patel, um, I can't thank you enough. I, you actually brought me to tears for a minute when you were talking. Um, sorry, getting motion to stuff. Thank you for standing up for the South Side. Um, I...
You could take that mask off, by the way.
Thank you, 'cause I'm suffocating here.
You're at least ten feet away from us.
Uh, this is going back generations and generations. The division between the North and the South is so prominent, and it's not only with the parents bickering back and forth with, you know, well, we pay more taxes, so we should have more here, but the kids, the kids feel it, the kids see it, the kids notice. So Falguni, thank you, um, for standing up and saying this is a good opportunity for us to give something to our South Side children. Elizabeth Conway, thank you for suggesting tabling the conversation, because I, I think you're right, you need to do more research. It's, it's a good discussion, it's an important discussion, and one that does need to be had. But I think collectively, the board needs to come together and find all hidden aspects, all opportunities, do a little bit more research, pull more resources. There's more that you can do when you do work collectively together as a team. And I know, I've seen, you guys can do it. Um, Dr. Bragan, I wanna say thank you for your honesty. Um, I notice even when you don't have an answer, you will tell us you don't have an answer, so I appreciate you not dancing around and trying to give us some politically correct version of it. Um, but in summary, going back to, uh, Falguni's comment, um, I think I speak for a, a lot of people in the town when I say, how long does the South Side have to suffer? And I don't, I'm not coming up here, you know, fist-pumping South Side pride. I, it, it, it's, it's so obvious, and it's so painful. I've gone through it myself, I've gone through the Edison School District from first grade all the way up. Um, and Jerry, I understand where you're coming from. I understand that you're promoting the zero percent tax increase, which it's commendable, but we know it's not realistic at this point.
It is.
It's not. And you already approved the three-and-a-half percent, and I'm not even gonna get there, but I think you're misleading the taxpayers a little bit by promoting your zero percent, and I don't think it's fair what you're doing. Please don't take my six minutes, I know you, you're, you're ready to jump on me, Jerry, this is my time, let me talk for a second here. Um, but I do wanna say one thing. You and I have been discussing the overcrowding issues going back to at least two thousand seventeen. There was this overcrowding task force. This is nothing new, but now that we're in a pandemic, it's more than an issue, it's more than a concern, it's a problem, and it's something that, and I'm not saying just you, it's something that all of you need to really, really focus on right now. You know, we're discussing, um, hybrid options. Seventy percent of the parents have their students going to school remotely for a reason. They're scared. They, they, you know, the pandemic and everything, the COVID virus, it's too new. We don't know enough about it. And what parent wants to have their child be the guinea pig to try to see if something works? No parent in their right mind is gonna say, well, let's hope for the best and send my kid to school. I understand that some parents, they, they have to go to work, they have no option. They have to send their child to school. But I do think we can do better, and we need to do better. And when you work collectively, yes, I know you can achieve this. And Jerry, I just have to say, regarding Lincoln School, the audacity of you trying to take the funds away from a school that has become a fire hazard at this point, the school is unsafe. Your children are grown, and they've graduated, but all I can say is, I'm pretty sure as a parent, you would not feel comfortable sending your child to Lincoln School in the situation that it's in. It's not right, it's not right to the staff, it's not right to the faculties, the teachers, the students, the janitors, none of them. It's just, it, it's from pure negligence over the years that we've even gotten to the point of where we are. And I don't say negligence as I'm pointing the fingers to the boards here. It's, again, collectively across all of the boards in Edison, between the planning boards, zoning boards, everybody involved. Shame on them for not thinking of our children first, excuse me. Um, and going forward, I know it's election season, I know people wanna say, look at me, look at me, but please, I'm, I'm almost begging you, please put our children first. I mean, it, it's great, I know, I'm on the same WhatsApp groups as you, I see the conversations, but seriously, you need to put the children first.
If you can finish up, your time is up, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wise.
Can I say something?
Do I, am I supposed to stand here while...
No, you could sit, back down, yeah, yeah, get your six minutes in.
Can I say something?
Sure, Mr. Sheehan.
Uh, I, I know I'm not supposed to talk about campaign here, but since I was brought up, a zero percent, uh, budget increase is a pledge, and this is a team that will get it done. As far as Lincoln School, I started the conversation. Lincoln School is a number-one priority, all right? So any school that we build, we're gonna build Lincoln School. All right? The only thing we're talking about, will the money be spent before June thirtieth? That's what we're talking about. If the money is not spent before June thirtieth, we wanna give the money back to the taxpayers.
All right, all right, we can't have back and forth, can't have back and forth.
Well, that's, that's, that's a part, that's part of, that's part of the budget.
Right.
So...
Next speaker.
That's, that's what the discussion is about, and you should allow discussions.
Right, we could always discuss that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan.
Good evening, Dr. Bragan and board members, Padmaja Chintop from Edison. I first wanted to just note, um, over the summer, like many parents, I was one of the parents who wrote to the district expressing many concerns about the quality of remote learning. And two weeks into the school, school year, I must say, I was, I'm pleasantly surprised and actually relieved at the amount of progress compared to the last marking period. So I do want to echo what everyone has said. Thank you so much to all the teachers and the district personnel for devoting the time and effort needed to make this better. So really appreciate that. And I know the district is still working on ironing out some of the kinks in the systems, and maybe already aware of some of these issues, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of them. The first is, um, about security on Zoom. So today, in, um, tenth-grade class, classes in JP, there were strangers that joined the Zoom, uh, classes. There was one stranger who joined and started using bad language, and the class had to be stopped. Uh, there was another stranger who just joined, um, blabbered, danced, and, you know, just, just went away. Um, and I know we need to remind our kids not to share the Zoom links, uh, but perhaps the district can look into requiring the students to log in every day with a new password, or maybe cut off the ability to log in after the class starts, or something else to make sure that this does not happen again. The second thing is, um, about remote learning. I know some of the students that have IEPs plans are all taking classes remotely, and some of them are not able to learn as well as others. And I would like to see if the district can do something to address those kids, to make sure that every student, um, no student is left behind, and there is something that we could do to help them. Then I have a couple of questions. One is, um, does the district have, um, a policy related to remote learning? And if there is one, where can I find it? Um, the second is, um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, um, that there is, there will be a survey done to get feedback from parents about the, about the remote learning. I would like to request that the survey be continued on a regular basis, maybe every month or every two months, so we can continue to learn and improve, um, improve the system. Uh, my other question is, once the hybrid model comes in next, uh, month, would the students continue to keep the same teachers that they currently have for all of the classes? Um, and then the last one is actually a request. I know, and this one relates to the three levels in, um, math placement at middle school. I know right now there are only two levels because the middle level was removed, which makes it much harder for kids to move up or down. which makes it much harder for kids to move up or down because now they have to jump through two levels. My request is, can the board put these three levels in math as an item on their agenda during maybe the next month or so? Thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Couple of questions I can answer. That will do the math through the curriculum committee. They could take a look at that at some point. So we'll look at the math. As far as policies, all our policies are online, including our remote policies and things along those lines. So it's like an encyclopedia, if people will remember.
Okay, okay, I wasn't able to find it.
So yeah, yeah, it's online. As far as keeping the same teachers, when we, once we go back with the hybrid model, I believe they will, right?
Correct.
Yes, they will keep the same teachers.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I think that's Mr. Pandya. There you go. Now it is.
Good evening, everyone. Yash Pandya, 20 Arbor Circle. I would just like to start off by saying a big thank you and express my sincere gratitude to Dr. Bregan for executing and initiating this program where high school students are able to take college credits earlier in their career. I can truly resonate to this because I attended Middlesex County Academy growing up and being situated in the campus, we had that opportunity to take college courses earlier on. And I'm happy to see that this same level of strategy can be executed for Edison Public School students as well because I myself have seen the fruits and the true value that this pays off in college. The second point that I would like to bring up is recently I attended a planning board meeting that our council had hosted. And in the planning board meeting, I saw that there was land that's being voted out for warehouses. So my request is for all BOE members is to please liaison with our council members, our planning board, our mayor, and see if this land can be useful for our students, whether it's multipurpose academically or recreationally. There is land available in Edison. And I truly, and I request and I plead you all to please see if this land can be utilized for the purpose, for the betterment, for even overcrowding issues that we face for our students. Please and thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Kraglo.
Good evening, everybody.
Name and address, please.
Ernest Kraglo, Edison, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Graduate of Lincoln School. Gerald Young, thank you.
Was it overcrowded that time?
Not like it is today.
Okay, I don't want to take up your time.
Some things have changed. So I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Speaking to a parent from Lincoln School, and you may have mentioned it, but I was having a hard time making out some of the information. Their first grader had an iPad and said that the charge in the iPad cannot be maintained. So basically, the iPad was draining before the end of the school day, even with the charger plugged in. So I was wondering if something happened, if it was swapped out or... Another question is, you mentioned when they go to the hybrid, students in the elementary schools would eat breakfast in the classroom. Is that going to happen? And if it is going to happen, how can we assure that the students and the teachers will have a, you know, safe environment, disposing of garbage, removal of masks? Another thing I was thinking about is it was mentioned that we're going to have an undisclosed location for students with temperature. And I started to think about a scenario where two students have a fever, one may have a COVID virus, the other one might just have a fever. But if we bring them into the same room, now we're exposing the kid who just has a fever and we're, you know, putting them in the elements. So I was wondering if there was any more specifics on the undisclosed location. Someone also, someone mentioned the the safety of the Zoom and the Google Meets. You know, I think that in this day and age, it wouldn't be, you know, that difficult to, maybe for the providers, to produce more firewalls or passwords. I'm a teacher myself and I had a student who was in my Google Meets. I was able to just kick them right out, but, you know, I don't know, there's got to be a way, you know. I think about that, what's that called, that when you, the bank sends you a text message or something and you get a, how many, how many street lights are in the, forget what it's called, but something, you know, to assure that we don't have strangers coming into our children's classrooms. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph, can I answer his first question? So basically about iPads, you're absolutely right. We heard about this in the curriculum committee and I didn't add it in because the minutes had become already too long. So basically about two years ago, the district actually had decided to move away from technology at the elementary school, so we never bothered really changing the iPads. And we didn't know we were going to be hit by this pandemic and now we have to kind of go back to using technology for learning. And the tablets that I talked about, the HP tablets or the HP Chromebooks, which can actually be used as a tablet as well as a laptop, that delivery got delayed because it was held up at the customs and we are getting that delivery, I believe, by October 14th. And all those iPads will actually be swapped with these Chromebooks.
Chromebooks, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anything else that?
Yeah, on the breakfast, Mr. Craig, we haven't made any decisions on that. The breakfast before the pandemic, they did have the breakfast, take it to the classroom, meet it in the classroom. I'm not sure how we're going to do that moving forward or if we would do that for safety reasons, as you said. What I said, I think, was the lunches now is potentially an option if you're at the 25% or less capacity, but we haven't made a decision on that. The isolation rooms for someone that has a temperature, each of the schools, we've developed two locations for the reasons you just said, you don't want two people in the same room at the same time. So hopefully that, if we have more than two, I don't know, we'll have to figure something out with that at the same time. And then as far as the Zoom and the Meets security, it's something our tech people are working on. But as one of the parents, I think, said earlier, that when a student shares their link, it's hard if, you know, you're not supposed to do that, you have that one link for the meeting and they share it with someone who shouldn't be there, the teacher has to monitor that and get them out. But there are some other security things that Mr. Barker's working on.
Yeah, but almost like, you know, one link per student.
Yeah, yeah, there are things we could do. We're working on it.
Yep. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Amy Ryan from Edison Township. Wanted to echo the comments from a lot of the other speakers. Thanks, everyone, the board, Dr. Bregan, the teachers, paras, all the staff for a great start to remote learning. Really excited how things are going so far this year, so I know a lot of work was put into it and we're grateful in our family, so thanks again. Wanted to ask a couple of follow-up questions from my previous attendance at the meetings. I was wondering if the remote learning plan has been approved by the state of New Jersey, my first question. Number two, if so, what information has been conveyed to the child study teams regarding allowing parent professionals? Since that had been excluded in a lot of students' IEPs. And the third is, there's been a lot of discussion about teachers receiving training for remote learning and how to handle the technology. Is there similar training going on for the support staff such as the paras as well? So number one, was the plan approved? Number two, when can we remove that exclusion from the IEP? And third, what training is going on for the staff members?
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Dr. Bregan?
You have tough questions, Amy. The approval official, I have not received confirmation. I know we were on a county meeting on Friday with the executive county superintendent and none of my colleagues have in the county either. But we've all submitted our plans and in Middlesex County, I believe, everyone except these Brunswick is totally remote presently. We are, except for our special needs programs. The parent professionals regarding them being in the IEPs and in the classes, they are permitted in the classrooms as we talked about that. We did put in that waiver. Again, I haven't heard feedback, but we're operating under the premise that we are permitted to do that and we are. As far as the individual IEP changes, I would reach out to the case managers if that needs to be adjusted. As parents, parents have a right to do that for their children.
Yeah, so far I've had no luck with it, so I don't know if there's any further direction that the child study team can receive on that, so.
You could follow up with me.
Okay, thank you.
And then the training, we're still working on the training for the support staff and as much as we can with our PD days and things like that, provide support for them and how best to work with the technology to support our students.
That's great. Thanks so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Anyone else? I'm going to assume Mr. Baker's going to... Oh, this young?
I'll talk quickly.
All right, good.
Since when?
Say a nice thing about Elizabeth Conway. Brett Baker, Grandview Avenue, Edison. Couple of easy ones, hopefully, one, I don't think I'm going to get an answer of this, but do we have a status of the lawsuits that are pending with the busing companies?
Still, yeah, we can't comment publicly, but it's being worked on.
Still being worked on, great. I just know there's a lot of concern that when we do return, if this has the possibility of creating ill will and further eroding trust in a transportation system already, so glad to hear that it's still being worked on. The two other things I just want to, like, questions about is like, what is the process by which we're communicating with families, like key important deadlines and information coming up? It's like, that stuff that's like typically like about moving to next grade. So I'm thinking of things like, you know, with the move to online voter registration, like have we publicized that to our high school students who are 18 plus? I see a date for the high school PSAT, but not sure about the date for the PSAT 8 and 9. And so just curious, like, when that information's going to be communicated? And then also just wondering, because like, late October, early November is usually when a lot of our magnet schools start doing their admissions tests and stuff like that. And so I trust that those schools will be communicating that information, but just curious for parents who are waiting for that information, what is the path that they might expect that information to come from?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bregan?
Yeah, we try to get most of the information out via our, you know, our email system, put it on a website. If it's something that's important in a timely manner, we'll use the robocall messenger system too. But, you know, those are things you mentioned that we got to be on top of and try to get that information out, you know, in a timely manner and we'll do that. If any parent has a question, contact their school, teacher first, administrator, then you could always contact our office. And if we miss something or we haven't gotten it out there, we'll get it out there. The eighth and ninth grade PSAT, we're working on that date. We don't have that yet. As soon as we get there, we'll put that out there.
Ms.?
Beth Talke, Edison, New Jersey. Do we have a written protocol or steps going back with the hybrid model per se if somebody, staff or student, got sick in school with COVID? To notify school, you know, what would happen with quarantine and so forth, parents? Do we have that in place yet? And also, are, you know, piggybacking off the safety issues with like the cleaning in the school and the protocols and stuff, is that written? You know, does all the staff and all the buildings have access to that? What the plans are, what the steps are for cleaning and so forth, like the nurses and everything? Does, you know, everybody in the staff yet have what those protocols will be?
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Bregan?
Yeah, we have both of those, Beth, on our line, online. It's pandemic policy 1649, I think, if you go through it. It has all the, it has all the protocols for, you know, should somebody be positive and things like that, the contractation expectations. And then within that is also the cleaning manual that was put together by our facility manager with all the cleaning protocols and expectations. If you can't find it, let me know.
Anyone else? Mr. Ross, you're going to be quiet tonight? Thank you. Thank you for coming out, Mr. Ross. All right, motion to adjourn. Mrs. Matiker and Ms. Maroney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you, board members. Have a good night. Carol, Fal, go get some sleep.
Good night.